I would like to call this Village Board meeting of August 2nd, 2018, to order. Would the Kirk Clerk please take the role?
President Jackson.
Excused.
Deputy Mayor Sullivan.
Here.
Trustee Schmidt.
Here.
Trustee Light.
Here.
Trustee Meritato.
Here.
Trustee Pojek.
Here.
And Trustee Schroeder.
Here.
Please stand while we say the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic in which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Trustee Schmidt.
Thank you. That's a surprise, but thank you. The next coffee with the Mayor and Village Board is scheduled for this Saturday, August 4th, from 10:00 a.m. to noon at the Center for Senior Citizens. If you have any comments, suggestions, or questions for the Mayor or Village Board, please call the Mayor's office anytime at (630) 909-5303. The Village of Glendale Heights remembers Patriots' Day on Tuesday, September 11th, with a silent parade of first responder vehicles, followed by a candlelight service at 7:15 p.m. on the front steps of the Village Hall. Please join Mayor Jackson, our Village Board of Trustees, police and fire personnel, neighbors and friends, as our community comes together for a moment of silence and reflection on Patriot Day, and we remember those we lost on September 11th. For more information, please call the Mayor's office at (630) 909-5303. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. Trustee Light.
Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome.
If you just finished cleaning out the basement, attic, and garage, you're looking for a place to sell your stuff. Then join us for the 14th Annual Community Garage Sale on Sunday, September 16th, from 9:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. at Camera Park. If you have nothing to sell, then come on out and shop for the bargains from many different sellers. For registration information, contact the Sports Hub at (630) 260-6060. The Village of Glendale Heights is revving up for the 36th Annual Show Shine Car Show Swap Meet at Camera Park on Sunday, September 16th, from 10:00 a.m. to 3:30 p.m. There will be 19 classes of vehicles on display, along with swap meet, food, music, and a touch truck for families and kids. If you're interested in registering a vehicle, or signing up to be a swap meet vendor or crafter, please visit www.glandalehighs.org/carshow to download a registration form. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Trustee Meritato.
Oh, thank you. Glendale Heights Police Department is hosting the 21st Citizens Police Academy, beginning Tuesday, September 4th. Enrollment is free and open to citizens 18 years of age and older who live or work in Glendale Heights. Applications for enrollment can be downloaded and printed from the Village website. For more information, contact the Police Department Non-Emergency Number at (630) 260-6070. School will be back in session soon, and it's very important to drive slowly and to remain extra cautious and alert for children while driving through our community. Pay extra attention around parked cars, school crossings, bus stops, and anywhere else that children might be present. Students should try and keep a regular route to and from school, and never walk alone. Always remember to follow traffic signals and crossing guards. Please be safe and alert to your surroundings. For more information, please contact the Police Department Non-Emergency Number at[298.72][298.72](630) 260-6070. Thank you.
Thank you, Pat. Trustee Pojek.
Thank you, Mayor. Come out to Camera Park, September 13th through the 23rd, for Oktoberfest, sponsored by Stetzelplast and the Village of Glendale Heights. Enjoy authentic German food and drink, live bands, dancing, entertainers, and other family-friendly activities. Enter for a chance to win a trip to Germany, which will include a special brewery tour. For more information, including hours, entertainment schedule, and admission fees, visit www.glandalehighsoctoberfest.com or call (323) 577-3893. National Night Out Against Crime is celebrated annually on the first Tuesday in August by law enforcement agencies across the United States. The Glendale Heights Police Department invites you and your family to join them on Tuesday, August 7th, from 6:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. at the Village campus, and show your support for crime and drug prevention in Glendale Heights. This free event is open to all residents and raises awareness about crime prevention in our community. The Glendale Heights Police Department has prepared an evening of fun, featuring a police dunk tank, games, face painting, a visit from McGruff, the crime-fighting mascot, emergency apparatus demonstrations by the Glen Side and Bloomingdale Fire Protection Districts, free hot dogs and hamburgers, and more. For more information, contact Chargin Kelly Dairy at (630) 909-5445, or the Police Non-Emergency Number at (630) 260-6070. Thank you.
Thank you, Chester. Trustee Schroeder.
Thank you, Sharon. Glendale Heights 2O Aquatic Center, last day of the season is Monday, September 3rd. Postseason pool hours will begin August 13th, when the pool will only be open on Saturdays and Sundays from noon to 7:00 p.m. So come on out and take a dip in the pool, hang ten on the FlowRider Surfing Simulator, and enjoy the exciting water slides and diving complex. For more information on the Glendale Heights 2O and the postseason hours, contact the Sports Hub at (630) 260-6060. Also, the Glendale Heights Historical House, which is located at 311 Windy Point Drive, will be open for tours on Saturday, August 11th, September 8th, and September 29th, between 10:00 a.m. and 1:00 p.m. Your nostalgia clock will be turned back to the way things were over 100 years ago, as we see the working pump in the kitchen sink, wood-burning stove in the kitchen, oil-burning light fixtures, and the player piano in the front parlor. Read all about the history of Glendale Heights in the exhibit hall, where you will learn about the original settlers, from the 1830s to the incorporation of the Village of Glendale Heights in 1959. So for more information on the Historical House tours, please contact the Mayor's office at (630) 909-5303. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary. We would like to recognize the Glendale Heights Fest photo contest winners. David, please come up to the podium to introduce the winners.
Thank you, Trustees Sullivan and Village Board. If I could have the photo contest winners come up here, please. For the first time this year, the Village held a photo contest over the five days of Glendale Heights Fest. We wanted to see all the amazing moments that people captured through photography. We had numerous photo submissions that were either mailed, emailed, or posted on social media using the hashtag #GHFest2018, as you can see on the screen. These photos range from professional shots using high-end DSLR cameras to selfies using our cell phones. We really had an amazing turnout of submissions, and it was challenging deciding on our favorite shots. After reviewing all the photos, we decided that these three talented photographers to my right stood out the most based on their submissions. Before I introduce our three talented photographers here, I just would like to thank ProCam out of Aurora for donating a $100 gift card to our top finisher. ProCam is one of the premier photography stores in the Chicagoland area, and it's a place I frequent myself. So at this time, I'd like to introduce our third-place finisher, Eleni Serna, who submitted this photo on Instagram, among many other amazing shots. Eleni is from Glendale Heights and graduated from our very own Glen Side Middle School. Eleni shoots with a Canon T3I, but this particular photo was actually taken with her phone, as she was able to capture her friends enjoying a ride during their first time ever at Glendale Heights Fest. Congratulations, Eleni, on a great shot, and we have a $20 gift card to ProCam for you. Next photo, our second-place finisher, is Lorraine Maddie. Lorraine is from Hampshire, Illinois, and she submitted this amazing panoramic-style photo, capturing all the elements of Glendale Heights Fest in one shot. Includes the carnival rides, the fireworks, and the thousands of people who come out for our fireworks show on the final evening. In this photo, she was also able to capture the moon and Venus off on the right. It's a little speck you can see on the right, which is very cool. Lorraine has been coming to Glendale Heights Fest since 2010, and she took this photo using a Canon 5D Mark III. Congratulations, Lorraine, on your great photo, and we also have a $20 gift card to ProCam for you. Last but not least, our first-place finisher is Lucas Pistone, who took this great photo of a young couple by our carousel. Lucas was born and raised right here in Glendale Heights, and has been coming to Glendale Heights Fest since he was little, with his parents and cousins. He has great memories of Glendale Heights Fest, and specifically, our fireworks show. Lucas has been doing photography for the past four years with his Nikon DSLR. Our camera shooters over here won't judge him too much on the Nikon. And he started taking photography classes at COD to get a certificate and degree in photography. Lucas's photo will be featured in future Glendale Heights publications, including the calendar and future newsletters, and we also have a $100 gift card to ProCam for Lucas. I want to say congratulations to Lucas and all of our very talented photographers, and hopefully we see many photos from them from here on out. So thank you so much.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, now, we're going to do the Charity Golf Classic presentation. Jennifer, please come to the podium.
On Friday, June 15th, 2018, the 19th Annual Charity Golf Classic took place at Glendale Heights Golf Club. The Charity Golf Classic Committee, chaired by Trustee Sharon Sullivan, has worked over the past year planning for this annual event. The Charity Golf Classic has raised well over $475,000 over the years for various charities, all benefiting or connected to the Glendale Heights community. Before I go any further, I would like to thank the Glendale Heights Charity Golf Classic Committee members for everything they do to help put on this wonderful event. Without their contributions, we would not be able to raise the funds we do for all these worthwhile charities. This year, the Charity Golf Classic charity recipients are: The FOP Lodge 52 Community Enrichment Fund, who utilizes the proceeds to benefit local youth programs, families in need, and area charitable organizations; The Glendale Heights Chamber of Commerce Scholarship Fund, who grants academic, trade, and special needs assistance to students who live in Glendale Heights or have a direct relationship with the Glendale Heights Chamber of Commerce; And lastly, Make-A-Wish Illinois, who grants the wishes of Glendale Heights children with life-threatening medical conditions to enrich the human experience with hope, strength, and joy. Before the check presentations, I would like to thank a few event sponsors that helped make this event the success that it was. These sponsors include: Our platinum sponsors were: Ameda Health &amp; Venice Medical Center Glen Oaks; Christopher B. Burke Engineering; Starino Romello &amp; Durkin Republic Services; Our silver sponsors were: Blue Cross Blue Shield; Better Business Planning; Guardian Life; Chicago Blower; Crow Horwath; DuPage Chrysler Dodge Jeep Ram; FOP Lodge 52; Glendale Heights Chamber of Commerce; Glen Side Fire Protection District; John Thorson State Farm; Kronos; Sunrise Chevrolet; Trotter &amp; Associates; and the Village of Glendale Heights. Our bronze sponsors and other major sponsors include: Bloomingdale Fire Protection District; Duke Realty; E. Hoffman, Inc.; Kai's Steak &amp; Seafood Restaurant; Kane McKenna; Stella &amp; Shelby's of Laredo Hospitality; and the Stevens Group LLC for donating our signs and banners. Add to these sponsors a number of golfers, hole sponsors, dinner attendees, and the volunteers, and you have the makings of what would end up being a very profitable night for our charities. Before I turn the microphone over to Trustee Sullivan, I want to thank my staff at Glendale Heights Golf Club for helping do their part to make this year's event a success. At this time, I would ask Trustee Sullivan to make the check presentations.
The first check this evening is being presented to the Glendale Heights Fraternal Order of Police Lodge 52 Community Enrichment Fund for $5,000. Accepting on behalf of the FOP is Mike Pentecost and Ryan Sheen. The second check this evening is being presented to the Glendale Heights Chamber of Commerce for their scholarship fund for $5,000. Accepting on behalf of the Chamber is Vince Zavansky.
Thank you. I just want to say thank you very much, on behalf of the Chamber of Commerce, to all the trustees, and of course, to Mayor Jackson, who is in here with us this evening. But it's just one of the best ways that we're able to fundraise for the scholarship. In fact, it's the only way we afford that. So each year, we're very happy to award scholarships. This last year, we were able to present three, totaling $3,500, or yeah, $3,500. So again, it's just really important that you allow us to be part of this. We want to thank you, and we really appreciate it, because it really goes a long way to help the kids in Glendale Heights. So thank you so much.
The third and final check receiving money is Make-A-Wish Illinois. We have been giving money to Make-A-Wish for a number of years, as one of the goals of the committee has been to help provide for a child from Glendale Heights the opportunity to get their wish granted. Franny Jones will accept this check for $15,000 for Make-A-Wish Illinois.
Hi, everyone. I'm Franny. That picture actually up there, thank you all, first of all, for having me come on into your meeting. The picture up there is Ashley, and I know she works very closely with the community, so she also wants to extend her thank you and congratulations for such a wonderful event. We do grant a little over 700 wishes each year, and many of those families do come right from your community, and these wishes are very impactful in their lives. So thank you so much for such a generous donation and incredible event. We are very lucky to be a part of your community, so thank you for having us.
We are already starting to plan the Glendale Heights Charity Golf Classic for 2019, so please mark your calendars for Friday, June 14th, for the 20th Annual Charity Golf Classic. Please continue to check our website for more information and updates. Thank you. And I also want to thank Jennifer and her staff at the golf course for all their hard work, because if it wasn't for them, this, well, and all of us, basically, this event wouldn't go on. So thank you, Jennifer. We would now like to recognize the retirement of our Officer Steve Zaminska.
Zaminska. Come on up here, Steve. Thank you, Board. Seems like every board meeting, we're up here with some kind of police event. We still have officers who work for us, you can tell by all of our guys in the back, and all of retired officers. Thanks for being here. It's a, you know, a great journey for an officer to spend 20 years at the department and leave on their own accord, and to be able to have a long, in Steve's case, a very long, because you're still young, retirement. Steve got hired in September 18th of 1998, so he's leaving here with 20 years of service, almost exactly. His last official day on the street is next Thursday, next Wednesday, the 8th, and then he's got some benefit time, and then his last official day will be the 18th or 19th of September. He's here tonight with his wife, Shar, and his daughter, Haley, and his two stepsons, Ethan and Cody. His parents are here, along with a couple rows of other family members that are all here to recognize Steve tonight. Some of you might not recognize Steve. You spent the vast majority of your career on midnight shift, right? Just recently, the last five, six years went to days. Okay, four years on day, so, you know, 16 years spent on midnight shift. Midnight shift back then was 11:00 p.m. to 7:00 a.m. So if you didn't, weren't around the village during those times, you probably didn't see Steve very often. So he spent his entire career patrol, a very honorable and desirable position to be in for his 20-year career. Steve did a lot of things in that 20 years. From the time he was on midnight shift, he was an AIM Award winner. He had 78 DUI arrests during that timeframe. Was recognized by AIM for that back in 2006. He's got 14 honorable mentions. He's got two Division Meritorious. I don't normally need a microphone, but this microphone's really not working so well.
I can hear it.
Okay. He's got two Division Meritorious Awards, along with the 14 other honorable mentions. I just want to mention the Meritorious Awards, because they go above and beyond our basic recognition. And the first one he received was for the fire that we had many years ago on Maryland Avenue and Fulton Avenue, where four people lost their lives. Steve was one of the first responders there, was one of the first guys there, getting people out of their houses, came upon an injured burned victim, got that person to safety, notified firemen, gave first aid, and was one of the main reasons that only four people perished and not 26 people that were saved. So Steve did a fantastic job on that. And then, second Division Meritorious he got was for a bank robbery, or an armed robbery we had at Miska's Corner Store, and many of our officers are still here, were on that call. Steve was in a pursuit with several of our officers, and they finally got the car stopped, got in a full pursuit, and Steve was vital to the apprehension of one of the suspects, and on the suspect was the handgun that was used in the armed robbery. And a great case, all the way around, because many, many people were involved in that, and a successful collusion with nobody getting hurt, and a gun off the street, and two bad guys arrested and going to prison. So those are two Division Meritorious that he got. He had 14 honorable mentions for all kinds of stuff. Steve, it's been an honor working with you. You've been a great employee, because the personnel file is filled with honorable mentions and commendations, but really holding on to nothing else. Couple injuries, but that's okay. It's been a great employee. You've been a great asset to the Police Department. And Steve is moving out of the area, is moving down to Tennessee, Kentucky, I'm sorry, Kentucky. Somewhere down south. He's bought a house in Kentucky, and he and his family are moving down there, probably for a school year, and he'll be pulling ship pretty quick. So we wish you nothing but success. We wish, we hope you come back. You have a lot of years to come back and visit, so it's been a great career, it's been a pleasure having you work with us and for us and with you. With that, we have some parting gifts, I like to say. Trustee Sullivan has one for you. Sergeant Pentecost, you bring up. Hurry up. I'll stall as long as I can. So traditionally, throughout the Police Department, we have a service award, which is your 20-year service, I think it's a watch. We have a plaque recognizing Steve's 20 years of service to the Police Department, presented to Steve Zaminska in appreciation of 20 years of dedicated service to the Glendale Heights Police Department and the community. And then, probably most importantly, for Steve, since he's going to be traveling down I-65, is his retirement badge. Retirement commission card. Again, it's always a pleasure, it's sad, a sad time and a joyful time for us in the Police Department, when an officer retires, because you lose that 20 years of experience, you lose that 20 years of training, but you're thankful that they're out of here safe and on their own terms, and they get to enjoy a long, prosperous retirement. Few words?
I just want to thank everyone for allowing me to be a police officer here for 20 years. Very enjoyable. I have nothing bad to say about the Village.
Thank you.
You know, life's too short. It's time to move on. I'm pretty talented, so it's time to go do something else and see what else I can do for a long time. So I just want to thank everyone, though, and I appreciate it.
We appreciate your service, Steve.
One more thing to give to Steve. Hopefully Sergeant Pentecost is running. This is actually something that everybody would like to see, I think.
What about Bob?
Always about Bob. Be nice to the computer, guys, nice to you.
Dave, you could take pictures.
So, here we go.
Since we're waiting for, oh.
Well done.
Oh, nice.
Traditionally, we, the FOP makes a shadow box for every one of our retired officers. Our fund is getting light this year. But this is Steve's shadow box from his time here at the Police Department, and that's yours to keep. Thank you, I know you guys have some other business to do.
Yeah, thank you. We need to recess for executive session to discuss collective negotiation. We need to recess for executive session to discuss collective negotiating matters between the public body and its employees, or their representatives, or deliberations concerning salary schedules for one or more classes of employees pursuant to the Open Meetings Act 5 IL CS 120/2 C2. Would somebody please make a motion? Trustee Schmidt.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call vote.
Trustee Schmidt.
Yes.
Trustee Light.
Yes.
Trustee Meritato.
Yes.
Trustee Pojek.
Yes.
And trustee Schroder.
Yes.
Okay, we are recessing to executive session. Everybody, go ahead and enjoy cake. Thanks, Steve. I would like to call this village board meeting back to order. There was no action taken in the executive session. Next on our agenda is a public discussion of agenda items. Is there anyone that would like to speak on an agenda item in the office? Oh, there's nobody here, anyway. Being none, the next item is the consent agenda. Trustee Pojek.
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Roll call vote.
Trustee Light.
Yes.
Trustee Meritato.
Yes.
Trustee Pojek.
Yes.
Trustee Schroder.
There is no old business, so we can go on to new business. There is a motion to waive first reading on new business items 2 through 4. Can I get a motion? Trustee Schmidt.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? First reading is waived on items 2 through 4. Number 2, an ordinance ratifying the sale of surplus personal property of the Village of Glendale Heights. First reading's waived. The ordinance will be 2018-5.
50.
That's 50, excuse me. You're right. I need a... Trustee Schroder.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call vote.
Trustee Meritato.
Yes.
Trustee Pojek.
Yes.
Trustee Schroder.
Yes.
Trustee Schmidt.
Yes.
And trustee Light.
Yes.
Ordinance 2018-50 is passed. Number 3, an ordinance to waive authorization... No. Ooh, an ordinance to waive bid authorize the issuance of a notice of award and authorize the execution of a contract with Radco Illinois Communications for the purchase and installation of police interceptor equipment. First reading is waived. This will be ordinance 2018-51. Trustee Schmidt.
So moved.
Second.
Trustee Light.
Chief, is this this new equipment, this stuff that's going to have the GPS involved with it, like we had talked about before at previous meetings?
GPS is not... GPS might be part of the new CAD system that's coming out, that's rolling out that software base. It's not hardware. It's not part of this purchase.
Okay.
The new GPS actually can be in every officer's radio.
Okay, all right.
Portable radio, not car radio.
Not car radio, okay. All right, thank you.
Chief, is this so you know exactly where they're at at all times? Is that what this is? Or is that something else?
No, that's something different. This is for all the new squad cars that were being purchased this year for the police department. This is to have new equipment put into them and installed.
Okay.
But I think what Chester was asking is if the CAD system gets the GPS, yes, they will be located. They would be able to be located.
Okay.
Roll call vote.
Trustee Pojek.
Yes.
Trustee Schroder.
Yes.
Trustee Schmidt.
Yes.
Trustee Light.
Yes.
And trustee Meritato.
Yes.
Ordinance 2018-51 is passed. Number 4, an ordinance approving and authorizing the execution of a redevelopment agreement by and between DuPage Dodge Chrysler Jeep, Inc., and Kelly Moon Properties, LLC, and the Village of Glendale Heights, DuPage County, Illinois. First reading was waived. This will be ordinance 2018-52. Trustee Light.
So moved. Second.
Roll call vote.
Trustee Schroder.
Yes.
Trustee Schmidt.
Yes.
Trustee Light.
Yes.
Trustee Meritato.
Yes.
And trustee Pojek.
Yes.
Ordinance 2018-52 is passed. Number 5, an ordinance amending the personal police manual of the Village of Glendale Heights. This is first reading. Number 6, a resolution approving and authorizing the execution of collective bargaining agreement with Teamsters Local 700 Regarding Public Works. This will be Resolution 2018-R-46. Trustee Schroder.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call vote.
Trustee Schmidt.
Yes.
Trustee Light.
Yes.
Trustee Meritato.
Yes.
Trustee Pojek.
Yes.
And trustee Schroder.
Yes.
Resolution 2018-R-46 is passed. Number 7, a resolution approving and authorizing the execution of an amendment to the collective bargaining agreement with Teamsters Local 700 Regarding Building Maintenance Employees. This will be Resolution 2018-R-47. Trustee Schmidt.
So moved. Second.
Roll call vote.
Trustee Light.
Yes.
Trustee Meritato.
Yes.
Trustee Pojek.
Yes.
Trustee Schroder.
Yes.
And trustee Schmidt.
Yes.
Resolution 2018-R-47 is passed. Since we do not have a committee of the whole meeting, if anybody in the public would like to discuss anything on or off the agenda, please come up to the podium. There's nobody in the audience, so be it none. The executive session is canceled. Would anybody like to make a motion to... Trustee Light.
I'd make a motion to adjourn. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? This meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everybody.